We okay on connectivity with our council members?
I'm here, Mayor, and apologize for not being.
We hear you, but we don't see you. But I guess we'll go and start the meeting. All righty. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Thanks for being here. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Stahl, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Please pray with me. As we gather today, we thank you for the opportunity to serve this city we so deeply love. As we gather, please give council the wisdom to discern and make wise decisions today. We pray for those who are hurting tonight. Bless those dealing with COVID and other health issues. Health issues to the God we worship. Amen.
Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming. Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Aye. Here. You have the minutes of September 27th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections. If not, we have a, by adoption of the city council, in this time of COVID with the Delta virus and everything, and the fact we recently had some outbreaks right here at City Hall, even with a member of council. The rule in this room for the audience is everybody is to be masked because we can't really control where you're going, what you're doing. So I would ask everyone who's not wearing a mask to please, please put on a mask. And if you're not wearing a mask, I will ask the police department to please escort you out of the building. So please put on a mask or police will come and escort you. We don't have one otherwise who signed up to speak to us today, but we do have a presentation for Unity Park, which I'll be happy to participate in. Amanda.
Can I take it off while I speak? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Amanda Taylor, and I'm here with, I'm here on behalf of 1,600 AT&amp;T employees who call South Carolina home. It is my privilege to deliver AT&amp;T's contribution of $500,000 to support Unity Park. At AT&amp;T, we're all about making connections between people and information, but especially people. That's why we're invested in, we've invested $800 million in the past three years alone in South Carolina networks. And it's why we have more than $1.7 million, or millions strands of fiber optics in South Carolina today. So in that spirit of connecting people and bringing communities together, we're excited to support Unity Park. Unity Park will will be a place of intersection and a place that will connect people of all walks of life. A place that will connect people of all age groups, ethnic backgrounds, and yes, connecting past and present. From those connections, we will even more, will be even more inclusive, dynamic, and forward-looking for the future of Greenville and its residents. We appreciate the opportunity to be a part of helping bring this exacting a vision to a reality. Thank you.
I'll get to address council. This is really unusual. Man has been way too modest. When we first launched the fundraising, really before it was even official, AT&amp;T was one of the very, very first to step up to the plate and make a contribution to Unity Park. We weren't even, I don't think we even had a bank account set up yet, so it was kind of, kind of difficult. And that amount, I won't tell you, I think the amount was, well, it certainly wasn't $500,000. Kind of go forward in time, Amanda appears here in our community as the representative for AT&amp;T, and she early on said had been looking, reading the paper about this park, and I know we made a modest contribution. It was an early one, though, very much appreciated. And she wanted to come by and learn more about it. So she came and learned more about the park and was good to her word. At that time, she said, if you give me some time, I think we can more than double, more than triple, more than quadruple the contribution of AT&amp;T. And I think you're here today to say, mission accomplished, you're now reaching $500,000. That's why I came, that's why I came down. Not sure this would have happened.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Again, I'll ask the police to please enforce our mask ordinance. Hate to have to ask for that again, but I just said it a moment ago, and I didn't see any enforcement. Consent agenda. Ms. Clerk.
Do we have a motion in a second, sir, for the consent?
No, to approve.
Motion second on the consent agenda. Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Aye.
Regular agenda, 15A, first reading.
An ordinance approximately 0.28 acre of real property and 0.168 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at the intersection of Prosperity Avenue and Plantation Road, and to provide the zoning designation of R6 Single Family Residential District.
Move to approve. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow. Mayor White.
Aye. First reading approval, 15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.016 acre of real property located at 1007 Hampton Avenue, and to provide the zoning designation of S1 Service District.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Do you want to hear from Jay Graham, or should we?
I do.
You do? Okay.
And we don't, we don't see anything on our monitors.
Okay.
An ad lib interpretive dance, but I have a picture.
That is fine. I'm good at ad libbing. So this is a request to rezone a sliver of property that is connected to some current S1 property because the applicant is working on a planned development project in this area. And so if we zoned it to the RM1, then that would make it difficult for them to combine all their properties and then annex this sliver back into the city to complete the project parameter.
Thank you. Okay, but we do see the big picture will be that whole L, okay, good.
Yes.
That whole L shape plus that sliver.
It'll actually be that, not just that L shape, but for 1,001, 915, that whole square is going to end up being the project.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Jay. Jay, is this the project that's redeveloping that old, oh, gosh, garage? And there's some affordable units in there. Is that not correct? Or go ahead.
That is correct. This is planned to be an affordable project, and the Thompson Automotive Building, I believe we gave landmark status to, and that, you are spot on.
And it's historical. The automotive building itself is a historical building.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Okay, 16A, new business.
A resolution to reappoint the municipal judge.
Motion second. Where is the municipal judge? Where is Matt Holling? There he is. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Holling? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, ayes have it. Okay, you can go home, Matt.
It looks like he has a speech, no?
Yeah, we're not, we're not entertaining your acceptance speech tonight. We'll be glad to receive written comments. 16B.
A resolution to reappoint various judicial positions in municipal court under Chapter 22 Municipal Courts of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion, please, is there a second? Questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Post, ayes have it. 16C.
A resolution to enter into a contract with Palmetto Infrastructure, Inc. for the construction of the Prisma Health Swamp Rabbit Trail pedestrian bridges at Lawrence Road and Haywood Road.
So moved.
Second.
You do now.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Got a brief presentation here to give you an update on where we are with the Swamp Rabbit Trail pedestrian bridges. Next slide. So for the past couple of months, engineering and other city departments, parks, and recreation, and our city manager's office, we've been working pretty hard at negotiating with our contractor who ranked the highest on the proposal selection process. As you recall, we, we came to you, before you in early July and provided you an update of the bids that had been received. I think there was five bidders that submitted proposals for the project. It went through, the Greenville County actually procured the RFP for the, for the proposals, and we went through their procurement process and selection process. But going through that, we had Palmetto Infrastructure Incorporated was the top-rated firm. Once we got the bids, we realized we were significantly, significantly outside of our budget that we had set aside for the project. So we began, came back to you, provided you to update, and essentially was, was given the authorization to proceed with negotiating, entering into an award for the project so that we could allow us to begin our negotiations with Palmetto. Since that time, one of the things we recognized going through that initial bid review was we did have some budget limitations to do it, the whole project. So we narrowed our focus down to just looking at the pedestrian bridges over Lawrence Road and over Haywood Road. Verde Boulevard was another road that we, that we received bids on, but we realized we wouldn't be able to do that project with our current budget that we have. Since, given that authorization to begin our negotiations with Palmetto, the city has assumed ownership of the responsibility for managing this project from the county. We began those negotiations with Palmetto, and we had several goals in mind coming out of our last meeting with you. Obviously, we needed to come up with a project, come back to you with a project that we could do within the budget that we had. We, to do that, we were going to have to get creative and look at value engineering options. And obviously, the, the timeline of completing the project by the end of next year was very important to everyone, and we realized that that was a critical goal for us. Pleased to say, we were, we had a lot of good discussions with Palmetto. We've gone back and forth with them multiple times. But we were able to get their bid price down by around $1.4 million. That comes through some fairly significant redesign of the bridges in some ways. But we have talked through that with them, and they have an engineer that they would, that they would hire and be part of their team, and we've had very detailed discussions on those designs, redesign matters, and are comfortable with their approach. There's, there's, there's some certain benefits. I don't want to get too, too far into the weeds of the redesign, but happy to answer any questions, but there's certainly some benefits to the redesign from a construction efficiency that can be realized, potential for just less risk for unforeseen issues with subgrade and excavation. But we were very comfortable with their approach on the redesign, and it was able to allow them to save pretty significantly on some bid costs, as you can see, to, to get their bid down by 1.4 million. We've, we've also got the commitment from them to, to meet the deadline that we've asked for as well. Next slide. So this kind of shows the cost breakdown with the negotiated price. What this also shows you is, is the cost that we, that we have out there to date with the original design that the county commissioned. TRC was the consulting firm that the county hired to do these bridge designs. That is a fee that we've, we've agreed to pay as part of the, the bridges on this project. You can see Palmetto's contract, they're, they're now just under $5 million, which, like, as I mentioned, was 1.4 million less than what their original bid showed. We, we are showing some, some third-party inspection and quality control testing in this, this cost breakdown as well. That's certainly something that's going to be needed, that the city would hire that out. And then, you know, this total cost also reflects building in some, some contingency, which we feel like would be important to go into a project of this magnitude, to have some contingency to work, work, work with. So that puts our total cost right at $6.4 million. And ultimately, what we're looking for here for our next steps is we're looking for a recommendation to be able to proceed with Palmetto Infrastructure to, based on their re, their renegotiated price and their revised bid price, to begin ordering materials and get, get locked in with their prices on steel, especially for the prefabricated bridges. We do need to lock in some, some prices with them. So we're, we're hoping that we can issue them a notice perceived by October 1st to, to really lock in at this revised price they've given us. We do need to seek some proposed, proposals for the third-party inspection. That's something we're prepared to do immediately, starting this week, and begin getting those proposals and to, to have that assistance. And, and then we'll also have to allocate some additional funding to shore up our budget on that, on this. This shows the, this slide shows kind of our original project budget that we have of $4 million and where we can, the, the options we have for shoring up the budget shortfall right now of $2.4 million. So we would be looking to our ATAX reserve funds and our hospitality fund reserve as well for that. Go ahead, next slide.
All right, boys, so stay on that one. If you can go back, this might be a Matt question. Matt, when we talked about this before, in like May, June, we were going to be pulling some from Greenways and Trails, but you're seeing now it comes out of, we're okay to cover it in reserve from H-Tax and ATAX?
Yes, ma'am. Our recommendation is to leave the Trails and Greenways money for other projects and use our H-Tax reserve and reserve the Trails and Greenways for those projects.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Yep. Well, I think that's important as.
That's a change, yeah.
Yeah.
That's good then.
We know we got to make the connection into Cleveland Park, and that's another project we'll be talking about in the near future. So moving forward, additional items, we do have to figure out how we cross Verde Boulevard. We're talking with the county right now, and basically, we're looking for support to move forward with a temporary measure of doing an at-grade crossing there. It's not, not really what we ideally see as the long-term solution. But if getting out to Icar is, is the, is the goal, we would have to consider an at-grade crossing there for the interim solution. We do have right now, in these calls I've shown you, it's, it's based on the city managing this project through engineering. And then, but we would hire out some third-party testing and inspection work to assist us. We could, we could look at the option of hiring a third-party to manage the whole project for us, to do the project management and the construction and test, testing as well. And we, we've got some ballpark estimates for what that would, that would entail, but that's, that hasn't been shown in the numbers that we've showed you. That would add another $330,000 to those, to those figures. Next slide. So what we're looking for tonight is authorization to, on this resolution to enter into a contract with Palmetto Infrastructure. We also need approval of that additional allocation of $2.4 million roughly. And a decision needs to be made on whether we want to manage this at the city staff level, or if we want to contract that out. We would need some. That doesn't have to be decided tonight. That's something we can get our contract going with Palmetto, get some proposals for not only third-party testing, but project management, and come back to y'all with some recommendations.
You know, I think that's just, I certainly defer to the city manager on that and you guys, but I just hope you'll look at it hard because you got a lot going, you got a lot on your plate. And I'd always felt like maybe it got off track with the county on just that very issue, that people thought, oh, we can manage this, and have a lot more, I have great confidence in you guys, and I'm just saying, look at the deadlines and the schedule we have before us, and can we do it? Do you need help? If you need help, we're willing, I think, to give you some extra help on it. We, we want to make sure we meet that guideline or exceed those timelines.
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth looking into, exploring, and see if, what those options are.
Just, it's a big project, and it almost takes hands-on every single day to make sure we're making progress. I mean, I do respect a Palmetto infrastructure. I just have a sense that we need to really be on them. And but speaking of the timeline, though, can you review for us? Because that's what everybody wants to know. What you think the timeline looks like?
So we've, we've got a few months of just some upfront. As I mentioned, the redesign, that's going to take us a couple of months to work through that. There's some more geotechnical exploration work, geotechnical work has to be done, engineering work has to be done as part of that redesign. We need to get that scheduled and get the engineering done. Palmetto would likely start early, early next year, construction-wise, start, start mobilizing. And, you know, right now, they have us substantially complete in November next year.
November of next year. And, and we feel okay about the other chores we have before us, Eden, in terms of the right-of-ways and whatever other housekeeping matters. We, everybody shaking their head, yes? Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
There were some questions about some of the easements and whether we had all the easements in place. We've been able to confirm that over the last couple of months as well.
All right, so the, these numbers, and I asked you, Eden and I had some conversations earlier, but these are for the prefab construction. These are modular, for lack of a better term, to drop in place.
Yep.
You, you touched on it with the paperclip, but is that paperclip part of it? Is that something we were looking to self-perform or contract out, or how is that piece going to get laid in there?
That, that is, so we're in the final engineering of that right now. We had preliminary plans. I think the, the key issue to be figured out there is how we get under Washington Street or across Washington Street, but we're in final engineering with that. We've got some estimates on what we think that project will cost, and I think we'll be coming back to you probably in late October, early November with an update on that project.
So that'll have to go through bidding unless we self-perform that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You know, I agree with you on, in terms of managing it, this is such an isolatable project, and there's just not enough of y'all to go around for everything else on the horizon, whoever does it. One, one pro to the city doing it is we've consistently said this is a partnership with the county. We all succeed together, we all fail together, and we're all working to succeed together on this one. And so this modular construction of ours has to match up just right with, they're self-performing the trail, right? They're doing, you know, with that, so that is a daily dialogue. So if it is not our staff that already has that relationship with the county, then it must be someone that, that can, can work on our behalf for those connections and partner with the county to stay on track. Because we're past the point of being able to finger-point if we're going to make December, November, December of 2022. That is critical.
Yeah.
You know? So I just, you know, I would, I would want a dedicated person on it and someone who can, who understands the relationship, the partnership, and the importance of us all succeeding together on this. Did they? Do they have recommendations on the testing? And the, you know, just, just that third-party testing and all, or is that something we have experience on through our other bridge contracts?
And when you say they, who?
They, Palmetto.
Palmetto. Well, yeah, they have, they'll, they'll have some internal quality assurance that they'll have to do. We'll be following behind them with quality control testing, but.
And we're, and we're looking to, to RFP that out in the short term. Okay. All right, so we didn't get any, they did a new timeline, but we didn't get any better, per se, than November 2022. We just held.
Yeah, the redesign kind of pushes, keeps us on that same schedule, is going through that redesign that we have to do to, to realize some of the prices that we, they've been, they've given to us.
And, and obviously, because we took it back from the county is okay with this as, as, you know, the recommended path forward.
Yep. We're, we're, we're discussing that with them and letting them know kind of our thoughts and where we are with the, the redesign discussions. And I haven't heard anything from them say they're not, not supportive of this.
Okay, well, just because you didn't hear it, you know, I'd rather hear that they are supportive of it, not that they said nothing. On the item three on the current slide, council support for county, you're asking us for support for the county to implement an interim Verde crossing solution. You know, that's, that's kind of a loaded question. It all gets to who's paying for it, who's designing it, and who's paying for it. I, I take it as the verb implement goes with the county, and that is on them.
That's our position, too, now that it's an at-grade crossing.
Does that trail, once it hits Clemson Icar, and again, I've really never thought we'd necessarily get there right away anyway, but once you get to Clemson Icar, does it pick up all the way to Maulin at that point? Is there a Maulin connection in the long-term plan? I think there is, but I don't really know where it is.
I'm not sure.
Well, let's find out, because obviously, that would make a big difference if we're, it's just, it's one more step toward Maulin, and it would be good to ask Maulin folks about that. One, one other comment, I'm sure Beth Rutherford's here, our media folks, that got, that got our attention. We'll be all over this, because, I mean, let's face it, of all the things we deal with, this is probably the project that people really, really, really care about and excited about, wondering when it's going to happen. And we'll want to tell people all along the way, so I would just point out the obvious, which is this particular project almost needs its own marketing strategy in terms of constant social media attention on the progress being made, et cetera, et cetera. I'd very, very much like to see some really nice big signs at the location of the bridges so that it's very clear when you're driving down Haywood Road and very clear when you're driving down the other that, that the trail is coming, and people know what they're seeing happen.
You know, I'll add that, Ken, you and I, we have spent time on that trail walking, that it is such, it's a, it's an incredible, it's a lovely section of Greenville that you would never know was there. And if you walk it now in its current state and showed that, where's Beth? And showed that, I don't think people really have an appreciation for how remarkable this extension of the trail is going to be once it's in place. It's like being in the middle of the woods and not even feeling like you're in a city.
Yeah.
So it really is going to be a special.
Let's really, let's really gin it up when we get underway on every level.
I mean, it'll be a game changer for Lawrence Road, for sure.
Aye, sir.
I hate to be the wet blanket on all of this. I am, I am not a definitive, permanent no on this, but I am a not yet. This is what leads me to that. This is what the United States Department of Transportation says about pedestrian bridges. It says that they should be used sparingly and as a measure of last resort. If ones that pedestrians will not use, if a more direct route is available, and what they mean by that is that if it's easier just to cross the street, people are going to just cross the street. It also warns that because they must be wheelchair accessible in the ADA, they generally require long ramps on either end of the overpass. And I've done some math myself, and, and these ramps can be anywhere from 100 to 150 yards. So if they're not positioned properly, all of the things that, that makes the, the bridges less likely to be used are exacerbated. I am concerned, I, I greatly appreciate the effort that you guys have done on this, and I greatly appreciate the effort to get that cost down. I still, however, you know, am concerned that if this can be done a better way, or a less expensive way, that money could be spread across a whole lot more intersections than just these two intersections that we're talking about. We are bringing in a consultant to look at this issue and the cost, I believe, $250,000. It just seems to me that it would be prudent for us to stop and wait and let our consultant look at all of these issues and try to figure out a plan that deals with all of our intersections across the board. Now, I hope that I am just being overly cautious on this. But, but like I say, I am not a definitive no, but I am certainly a not yet, and that's why I will, tonight, I will vote no.
One thing for sure, though, we have a lot of experience with the trail now in the county, and. county and I think most people would, I respect what you're saying, and I think that's more commentary on urban, dense urban areas they're talking about, about that you don't want to go over the, you don't want to go over the intersections. But in the county experience, especially after the fatalities that we've seen, I think most people would now say that, wow, we wish we had safe crossings on those county crossings.
I just feel like, I just feel like the trail is sacred, that it's, it's, you know, we have learned to go over or below on that trail wherever we are legally able to do it. You know, we had a recent fatality in the county area of the trail. I just, I cannot imagine extending the trail across major roads like this, like Lawrence, like Haywood, without a safe way, meaning above it or below it.
Yeah, I, I just think that there may be a safe way at grade to do it. I mean, I've been, when this all sort of came about, when we first started talking about this, I ended up spending a week in DC, which if you've been to DC is probably one of the most pedestrian bike-friendly cities in, that you've ever been. And as I'm walking around this city for this week, there's way more traffic, both foot and vehicle than we ever expect to have on that trail or on the roads looking at it. And they created these walkways where we're basically, you know, they're, they're very expanded walkways, they're extremely well-marked, they've made it a matter of culture that, that people are stopping these, at these intersections. And intersection after intersection after intersection, cars are stopping and letting pedestrians go past. And, and they did all of that without any pedestrian bridges at all. New York, same way, you walk down, there's that, way more foot traffic and vehicle traffic than we're going to have on, on the Swamp Rabbit Trail or any of the roads that we're talking about. They're able to create crossings where, that are still safe for pedestrians without the use of, of pedestrian bridges. I, I, I don't want a fatality, I don't want an accident, I mean, I don't want anybody to get hit on that, on that, on that trail. But at the same token, if we spend $6.9 million to create two pedestrian bridges, we protect people on two intersections where we have, we have, we have intersections across the city where people are, are at risk. So at this juncture, I understand, I understand the, the logic behind it, but at this juncture, I'm not ready to say that $6.9 million should go towards, or, is it, is that right? My $6.5, $6.5 million should go towards protecting these two intersections and we leave all these other intersections at risk.
This is all H tax money, right?
Say again, I'm sorry?
It's all H tax money.
I mean, I.
I mean, I can't use that on a different.
I believe, I believe that, I believe there may be a cheaper way. And I may be, I think there may be a way that we can not only take that money, even if, even if it's H tax money, and figure out a way to use it to protect a lot more intersections than what we are protecting this. Now, like I said, I might be wrong, you know, on that, that's what I'm saying. I'm not a permanent definitive no on this, you know, there may, you know, there may be a time where a consultant comes forward and says, hey, you know, this is the way it's got to be done. You know, I, I went through, you know, it, from my perspective, I went through the US Department of Transportation site, they've got actually a, a tool that you can use online where it talks about all these different alternatives that you can use. It talks about PHBs, pedestrian bridge, whatever, PHBs, talks about pedestrian signals, turn signals, spanning crosswalks, all these different other alternatives that you can use in order to make sure that pedestrians are safe. A lot of the same things that they have in DC and major cities and they keep their citizens safe. Yeah, that's just, that's just a lot of money to me. And like you, like you have quoted me a number of times, every dollar that we spend on one thing is a dollar that we can't spend on something else.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of comments. I got a couple of comments, if that's okay. So, um, I, I just want to point out that, first of all, thank you Councilman Gibson for making sure we're paying attention because it's important and it's important conversation. I look, I think I look at it a little bit differently. I look at it as, I look at this money as an investment for quality of life, for redevelopment, for economic development, for healthier living. But I think that, that there was an economic impact study conducted on the Swamp Rabbit Trail in the county, and I'm, I could be wrong, but I think it, it was about $7 million economic impact per year in the county. Of course, we have a small, much, much, much smaller footprint, so it's not, probably not going to be that much. But I, I guess I just, I look at it as, and being fiscally cautious is, is, is very good. And I really appreciate Councilman Gibson's comments because it really does make us, makes us pay attention. But I do think that the allocation of the money, whatever that comes out to, will end up, we'll see that, we'll get that back in economic impact, I believe. So I, that's, that's where I am on it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor of the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Who's?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Staff reports, in-step update. So this ought to be good.
Doc Skibb, is now appropriate time to make a comment? Or you want me to wait till after this?
Comment about.
How wings?
Oh, well, at the end, let's.
Yes, sir. All right, I'm going to invite Eddie Littleton to come up here and join me for this one. Tag team this one. We'll try to keep it brief, I know everybody's busy. I think, so this is a, just to give you an update on where we are with our in-step program and more specifically to get your concurrence, hopefully, to move forward with changing our criteria that we use to rank our streets. It's been a, been a long time, a long work in progress here. I think we started looking at our criteria almost two years ago now, it was late 2019, and we formed an internal working group within the city. We had community development, economic development, engineering, our public works, and parks and parks and rec. And we kind of looked at our, our program and the criteria and always looking for ways that we can improve things. Go to the next slide. The in-step program has been around for, since 1999, it's a very successful program, very popular program. And we're pretty, pretty pleased with the work we've been able to do to date. We've done about 11 and a half miles through the program since it was established. This, this map here kind of shows, you know, the number of miles of sidewalk that we have in this, that we, or in the city that do not have a, the number of miles of streets in the city that do not have a sidewalk, right at 200 miles there. And estimated cost to get those sidewalks on those streets is around $150 million. So you can see, very, very challenging, I guess, task at hand, but we're pleased with the program and what we've been able to do with the funding to make, to start chipping away at that, obviously. This here shows our current ranking criteria. And what you'll see is various criteria for what we call attractors, things that, that attract pedestrians to walk to, whether it's a school, a bus stop, some sort of other medical facility is currently on here. It also talks about the type of streets that are, that we have, being arterials, collectors and residential-type streets. And then we look at our density. And this current evaluation form is what we've been using for probably the last eight years, I would say, I think, 2011, okay? We did an update in 2011 where we adjusted some of these criteria. But Eddie Littleton is one of our engineering project managers, he's been managing this program from the onset. So he is very, very familiar with, you know, kind of the ins and outs of it. And, you know, over time, we, we see areas where we, we see maybe some things within the current criteria where we're not maybe getting some of the streets done that we think should be a focus. So some of the things we're seeing with our current criteria are, we're not, our, some of our higher-volume streets are not getting enough emphasis. There's not enough separation in the, the points where they, the point rankings where they get a little more separation and more credit there. And that's really between our low-volume and our high-volume streets. There's also, right now, grocery stores are not included in our, what we call our attractors. That's a, we have grocery stores, you know, all around, that, that is certainly something that people choose to walk to, and we feel like that needs to be incorporated in. And then one of the other issues we see is some of our higher-density areas are not getting captured or not getting enough, I guess, points from, by virtue of those, they're just not close to some of those attractors, those parks, those schools, those other attractors that we have. So we've kind of taken a look at those and we've looked at those criteria and we've come up with some recommendations of what we feel like we can do to address those concerns. I'm going to let Eddie kind of take it from here and, and explain how we have looked at that and how we, some of the recommendations we have to address those concerns.
I'm Eddie. Met most of y'all. So basically, what, what we've looked at is, not trying to repeat what Clint said, but just revise the criteria. We're trying to, to make it better, to make it serve the needs, make it, make our sidewalk program be safer, you know, be safer for people. So we've, we've really, with meeting with our staff working group, we've really tried to hone in on some of these areas. If you would, go ahead and go to the next slide, slide please. So this is the new table, if you will, new chart, that shows how we've broken the system down into ranking the, the streets. So basically, in a nutshell, what we've done is we have three parts now. So the top part is our attractor factors. This is just what Clint was talking about, our schools, public transportation, like Greenlink, parks and recreation centers, major grocery stores, and system connectivity. Basically, the system connectivity is, for instance, if you have a side street or a main road that has sidewalk and the street that's next to it doesn't, because it will connect to existing sidewalk, it gets an additional score. So that way we can extend our current network for people to walk on. So the attractor factors is going to get a third, 33% of the total score. And also what we did was, the max score that you can get now is 100 points. We tried to make it very simple. So zero to 100 is the score. So basically, what I just said, attract factors to get up to 33 points. Then what we did was we said, let's look at the population, because we do have areas, and the example I could give you would be like the Gower area. There is a lot of homes out there, a lot of people live out there, but there's not any parks and recreation centers and those attractors that's giving them credit or giving them points. But there's a lot of people, if you drive through there, walking the street that would love to have sidewalk. So we said, we'll give the density a third of the points, so they can get it to 33 points. Then we said, let's put in the safety factor. So what we decided on the safety factor is, do the streets have a lot of traffic on them? So what we decided to do is we put three categories, the arterial and collector streets is the top, because 99% of all the arterial streets, like the Lawrence Road or, you know, Woodford Road, they already have sidewalk. And then your residential streets are getting 50 points, and then the local low volume is getting zero. Now, now that's like, when I say 100 points for, say, arterial collector, in 33% of that, so you would get, that's where you get the 33 points. So that's, just trying to summarize that, not get too much in the weeds, but just telling you how we tried to come up with this. We want the safety factor, the density to be very important, and then attract factors. So if you'll go ahead and move on to next. So just as a quick example, I'm not going through all of these, these are just some streets that we picked out to show you how the new ranking system would be incorporated into our streets. So for example, take Ackley Road. As you can see, Ackley Road is a collector road, but currently it has in our existing program about 70 miles of street section ahead of it. But with our new program.
Wait a minute, all right, so stop there because I was trying to understand.
Okay.
So that, you're saying 70 miles of sidewalk would have to get built before Ackley would come up in the queue?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
And, and another one in the same area, I think this in your area, Ken, is Clark Street. So Clark Street currently has about 10 miles of street ahead of it. Now, we're getting ready to do that, but with our new program, it's a collector street, it goes up to, it has less than a mile of street ahead of it, so it goes nearly to the top. Take the Gower Estates area, Henderson Road for instance, which is a collector road that goes through the Gower neighborhood, currently has 75 miles of street section ahead of it. With our new program, it would bump up to 15, only 15 miles ahead of it. So we, we are seeing, we're liking what we see with what we try to do. Now, is our, is our point system perfect? It's not perfect. We, there's not one out there that we can find, but we feel like that we've done a really good job of trying to make improvements to these collector roads like a Mohawk or Chick Springs or Henderson Road, those type streets is what we're really trying to get people who, it serves a lot of neighborhoods.
And we build about how much a year? How many miles?
Currently, we're, we're probably with the inflation, less than three quarters of a mile now a year.
You know, when we, when we saw this last, it was about a year ago, and a comment was made, for example, in the existing system, you know, you got points for having a school in close proximity, but, but recognizing that a lot of schools have been closed in certain neighborhoods. So we still have that as a bonus point, and now we have groceries. You get bonus points if you're close to a grocery. Well, those same neighborhoods that had schools closed also are food deserts. So again, it's, 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 it's a disproportionate, in my opinion, you know, by those features, the very neighborhoods that are struggling to get those amenities are, are also losing points because they don't have them in this particular program, which concerns me.
Well, and, and those are valid questions, and we've looked and like the working group, we've, we've taught, I've tried to do research for different areas in the country on how they do it, and, and honestly, I can't find a perfect system, to be honest with you. We're not sure how, you know, I'm, I'm just being honest, we're not sure how to, what factors that we need to do, and ultimately, we wonder if it, you know, do we come down, do we meet with these neighborhoods and find out which streets would they really like to do and then get approval from you guys? So, you know, we have options to.
And I would, I would even contend, you know, to, but I, I think, Councilman Dow, you know, I think the, the opposite side of that argument is, is, and I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm, but I'm saying the opposite side of that argument is, I've got a whole, whole neighborhood that can't get to North Point Harris Teeter because they can't get down Mohawk. So, you know, I, I think to Eddie's point, you know, we're, we're, how do you get there? How do you get there? You know, I mean, like, how do you get there in terms of the rankings? So, you know, yeah, we, sure, we got a, we got a grocery store, but we have a whole section of neighborhoods that have to, you know, fear for their lives trying to walk down Mohawk to get there. So I.
Well, Mohawk, Mohawk moved from 25 miles ahead to, it would be in two years. So somehow Mohawk doing something right.
Yeah, and, and that's very true, and, and I think if we were, Eddie, if we were to include watering holes, we'd get Mohawk even higher in that list. So, you know, next, next, next go around, maybe we need to consider that.
And one thing I would say is the, the new criteria, if you want to go back one slide, Michael. You can see, as Eddie was mentioning, we got to three, three groupings and they all get, you know, 33% weight of that 100-point scale. You know, we can certainly look at putting more weight on safety, being the street type or the density. You know, we can play with that weighting right now, our recommendation is we just give each group equal weight, I guess. That is certainly something that, if we, if we want to put more emphasis on looking at the density of the neighborhood or the, the actual street, the safety of the street being the, the volume of traffic on the street, that's certainly something that could be considered.
Clint, on the, on the final list that you sent to us, would you have that some, either a column or separate it by district? So we make sure that there's equity in what districts, each district is getting.
Sure. And that's the, that's the, with the program, and we've, you know, unfortunately, we got a lot of miles of streets without sidewalk, and as much as we'd like to have it on every street, I mean, that's what we're trying to accomplish, but there's plenty of streets throughout the city for us to, you know, that have very similar rankings and that we can come up with a.
Well, and, and, you know, to be fair, you know, like District Four is a significantly larger geography than any other district. You know, just, just footprint is massively larger than any other district. So I'm not, you know.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm not sure splitting it by district is the right way.
Yeah, but not by district, you're going to make, send it the wrong direction, but, you know, it's all written in history. When we started this program, I think in 1999, what you learned was that they built sidewalks in the 19th century. When we started this program, I think in 1999, what you learned was that they built sidewalks in the 19th century, the early 20th century, really up until about the mid 1950s. And so any subdivision built 1955, 1960 and on, they didn't build sidewalks in Greenville. They didn't build them in Roanoke, they didn't build them in Cincinnati, they didn't build them anywhere. It just wasn't the thing a city did until around the 1990s, when we started again requiring sidewalks to be part of any new subdivision as we do today. But that's the same history. Every city in America looks just like Greenville in that regard. So our older neighborhoods have sidewalks, our newer ones or the mid-century ones do not.
Yeah, if they put them by zip code, we can find it, you know, here's the ones for our area. My district is divided in almost three parts. So, so you'll be working all day trying to get mine into our district.
Hey Clint, what about the thought of, okay, so when I, Gower is a great example of a place where people walk all the time and they don't have a sidewalk, I'm aware, I mean, it's, there's no sidewalks. Henderson Road, huge cut through, huge cut through. So a cut through that's gonna see more traffic than, you know, Hialeah would maybe, right? So to me, that's more unsafe to be on without a sidewalk than Hialeah, just use those two. But is Henderson Street, State Road?
No, it's City Street.
The city, city. So to me, if it's a cut through, it's more in need than a non-cut through. Now, how do you classify a cut through? Well, any neighborhood president can tell you.
It's almost like an arterial.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
To use their terms. It's collector, arterial.
What they're trying to do is get like Henderson Road, better collector, these other ones collectors. We're trying to get them up on the list because they really need sidewalk.
And I don't know if collector is a term y'all use or if that's a real classification or what. But I'll tell you that, that the cut throughs are just human behavior. You know, that's the way I call a cut through develops because of human behavior.
That's what collectors do.
Well, that needs to be, you know. And things become cut throughs when other things change. You can think about the Agusta Road.
It changes with development patterns.
Exactly. So I just, I think that's something to take into account. Maybe it is on this grid.
Just to be clear though, even though,
Go to the next slide, Michael.
Even though Ackley Road went from 70 to 75, 15 to 24, at the rate we're doing sidewalks, we're still looking at 20.
Yes, but to, to that, just on a side note, we're getting, we're doing, looking at the special access neighborhoods with the CDBG bond money. Ackley Road is actually on the list. So it's actually, we're already looking at doing survey, getting design done and it will, it's probably gonna happen in the next couple of years. But this was just showing what our, the revisions are trying to do to collect the streets like that.
And that, that, that money, how long does that last?
Is it like three years, four years?
So, once we get the money, it's a 15-year repayment term, but we can re-up that borrowing within about three to five years.
Thank you.
And then the NIB, our Neighborhood Infrastructure Bond, will probably have some sidewalk priorities in it. Oh, everybody's not.
They'll have a big time.
So, you know, it wouldn't, if we knew, for example, Lounes Hill was coming up soon under the in step, maybe it's not the candidate for the NIB, because it's gonna get covered under in step soon. But in Ackley, it's 15 years out under in step, other, other means need to be sought.
Yeah, when we first started, we were doing about a, a mile a year. That has dropped down unfortunately with the cost increases. Doesn't go quite as far. But certainly the bond money is gonna help us put a big dent in this too. We've got a few other slides that just showed more examples of the streets. You can see like this, this street right here serves, I don't know, 10, 12 houses, very low volume street, but it ranks really high right now. But you, you could imagine a sidewalk on a street that carries more traffic, serving the greater good of the neighborhood, I guess. But certainly, you know, we want to focus more on those collector streets, those cut through streets that are driving more traffic where they, they kind of serve as the backbone in the neighborhood. And, and if you get it on those streets, then that overall system connectivity really starts impacting the other streets that, that feed off of that. So, next slide.
Hey, real, real quick, John, to work in here. If, if we're not appropriating enough money to get us at least a mile a year, we might want to, instead of looking at the dollar figure of a, of a million dollars, a million and a half, we might just look, want to look at, all right, how much money do we need to get a mile or a mile and a half for whatever it is? And then budget, budget it that way instead of just a dollar figure. But instead say, how, how many, how much distance do we want this year? And then look at what that cost would be.
Good point. Stono Drive, just another example of a fairly low volume street that, that currently ranks very high. That may be focusing more, maybe like we've been doing on Chick Springs. Would have a bigger impact on the neighborhood and overall safety. Next slide. This is Ackley Road. We just talked about Ackley Road and it's on our list for our, our bond program. So we're excited about that and we know that'll have a huge impact in Nickel Town. And then Henderson Road, we, we've talked about too. Those are, again, those are, those collector roads, they, they, they feed the neighborhood. It's where most of the traffic ultimately comes to these roads to get out to the arterials. And putting a little more emphasis on them to improve safety is, is what we're recommending. Be happy to answer any other questions. That's what we've got.
Well, there isn't a perfect solution and they are expensive, more than anyone can appreciate, I'm sure. And I appreciate y'all taking, I mean, y'all took about a year to look at this, so.
We're, we're sorry it took us this long to get back.
No, I mean, I, I trust that that was, you know, looking and thinking and exploring all the options and I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Stoll, you wanted to, we got, that's the end of the agenda, right, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just one general comment. Today, we closed or had the closing ceremonies for the Wings of the City exhibit. And it was a pretty neat event. I, I wanted to thank Parks and Recreation, Angie and Tracy and Tara, and also Public Works for the work they did. They even arranged for a flight of geese, for a flock of geese to fly in right as the program was starting, which was pretty magnificent. So it was, it was a great event. And, and what it shows is, if you look back at Vision 2025, which is 17 years ago, which is hard to believe, it shows that we've accomplished many of the things that were in Vision 2025. And the Greenville truly is a city that has world-class public art. And thank you to our city team and Hispanic Alliance for, for pulling it all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you need anything else from us? I'm sorry, that's it for tonight. Thank you.